Just one moment, folks, just making sure we're on YouTube as well.
Thanks for your interest, folks. You're all set.
Awesome, thank you. Kind being seven oh two, I call to order the Franklin School Committee meeting. Meetings are recorded by Franklin TV and shown on Comcast Channel nine and Verizon Channel twenty-nine, as well as recorded by Franklin Matters. All right, and so we'll begin with our pledge student. So we have Anna Powers. I'm gonna kind of come on up to the mic. And is a student who consistently lives our REM dog core values and is a model citizen. During her time at Remington Middle School, she has been a driven and dedicated student and active member of our community. She has participated in RMS Cares, the Community Service Club, Little Buddies, a club that fosters relationships between middle schoolers and kindergarteners and first graders and intramurals. She is an avid reader who plays tennis and volunteers at the Franklin Food Pantry. To close, her teachers describe her as a student who consistently shows care and empathy for others. She is willing to work with and socialize with all students while valuing what they bring to her life. Remington is proud to have her represent us as a pledge student. We are proud and proud to have you before us. If we could all please stand. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now, as is customary, we'll pause for a brief moment of silence. Thank you very much. If you want, you can get out of here. Thank you very much. Take care, everybody. All right, review of agenda. Agenda look good?
Does.
All right, bills were in order, payroll?
Everything's in order.
All right, FHS student representatives.
Awesome. Hello, everyone. My name is Ahhan Shetty and I am the class president of the senior class at FHS. Some whole school news, a lot of fun things going on right now. We want to say good luck to everyone that's participating in DECA's SCDC conference this weekend in Boston. Congratulations to the FHS Theater Company for advancing to the semifinal round of the METG Festival with their production of Flowers for Algernon. And then congrats to the FHS Mock Trial Team for advancing to the Elite Eight in the Mass Bar State Tournament. Their next trial is next Tuesday. Registration for spring sports are open until Wednesday, March thirteenth, and tryouts and practices will be starting on March eighteenth. The Chorus and Orchestra MICA Showcase Festival is next Tuesday, March twelfth, and the Band MICA Showcase Festival is on Wednesday, March thirteenth. And the FHS Jazz Band is participating in the MAJE Festival tomorrow at Algonquin High School. In sports, we have two sports teams with big games coming up. Boys Basketball is playing Putnam in the Sweet Sixteen tomorrow night at six-thirty at Franklin High School, and the Boys Hockey Team is playing Severian in the Elite Eight at Loring Arena in Framingham on Thursday evening. Some brief news about the Class of Twenty-four, Senior Banquet is on April fifth at Lake Pearl, and all-night party tickets are due by March fifteenth. Students should drop off ninety dollars cash or check at the front office. And for the Class of Twenty Twenty-five, their prom is on May third and their theme is luxury.
Thank you very much. Any kind of questions or comments from the...
Just congratulations to the students advancing. Definitely some great honors. I was at the high school on Saturday while they were doing the METG competition and it was just like jam-packed and just the energy that was there was palpable, so I'm glad that they've moved on for Flowers for Algernon, so kudos.
I just want to say I'm excited for the Boys Basketball tomorrow night, but we also have a joint budget subcommittee that I hope people attend. So we can record either one, but you know, I'm biased, but my son's a basketball player and he'll be there cheering on the team too, so like, we're big fans. We live across the street. That's in jest. Go Buss.
All right.
Awesome, thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. All right, over to superintendents' reports.
All right, good evening, everyone, on Zoom and in the audience. Thank you for being here. Ahhan, I just want to show you, I did print out these announcements and I didn't plagiarize. So I just wanted you to know that DECA Theater Company Mock Trial are all referenced. I thought you did a great job, so I don't think I'm gonna follow up on that except to say that we're proud of all of our students who participate in these, and I know that you're involved with DECA, so you have to go home and prepare for your competition, so with that said, just wanted to once again congratulate all of our students who are involved in so many great things happening at Franklin High School, and we wish them all luck. They have been very successful in many areas and that's really a credit to the team of kids, the coaches, the adults that work with them every day. And it doesn't just start in high school. A lot of these things happen as kids are being developed through elementary and middle as well. I think we benefit from seeing the culmination of Ahhan, but Ahhan has come through the Franklin Public School system. So when you think about that, I just don't want us to lose sight of, we hit on Franklin High because that's where the most access to these types of competitions and things like that. But the skills and the building blocks that lead to a kid like that don't just happen senior year. They happen from a strong family, a great kid with great values, and you're an example of a Franklin High student who's gone through the system and is making us all very, very proud, so thank you.
Congrats, good luck.
Good luck. Moving forth, today was the half-day for elementary and middle school students, and during that time, families had an opportunity to conference with their students, their teachers, and there's another round of conferences that will occur tomorrow for the half-day. An update for comprehensive master facilities planning. We've engaged in stakeholder groups in two workshops. The groups are composed of students, families, teachers, administrators, school committee members, and the first workshop was on February twelfth, which focused on Portrait of a Graduate, and the goal there was to look at the portrait of a graduate and determine where is it being applied and then where are some areas where we could look to apply it and try to get some good information that will be helpful to us as a district around where are we seeing it and where are some areas where we can continue to grow. The second was yesterday, which was only Monday. March fourth was a workshop on visioning. It was the first day of visioning, a lot of building of some shared understanding, and the next meeting is next Monday, which we hope to engage the stakeholders and the group of folks that we've brought together. Once again, a cross-section of our community will be joining us. It's the same group because that's a two-day workshop, so Monday will be the day for the visioning, and we hope to gain information from those sessions and ultimately take that into forums with, to expand the conversations around visioning for Franklin Public Schools. So with all that said, you know, I think we have, continue to have more work to do in this area, but wanted to let you know kind of the pace at which we're moving. Finally, Kate Jessup, who works for the Locker Associates Master Planning, she's also an architect with KBA, Kessel Booz, did her walkthroughs of every building, looked at every space from an educational adequacy lens, and she will be sharing her preliminary information during the subcommittee for the Comprehensive Facilities Analysis Subcommittee meeting that we can talk about, I know it'll come up later, but just to give you a sense of what's happening in those areas. So with that said, I'll open it up to any questions.
No questions. I'm just looking forward to hearing what they have to say next week for the other buildings that I wasn't able to tour.
Just a comment. So yes, Mr. Giger had mentioned, we had the half-day for parent-teacher conferences and whatnot, and at least just wanted to applaud the middle schools for the student-led conferences. So for those that don't know about this, in middle school, the first conference is where the student actually takes their body of work and summarizes that and actually presents it to their parent, guardian, whomever that's there, and just showing really what they've learned, how they've grown, what their goals are. And the great part about this was that it allowed them to advocate for themselves and really help build upon that. And for those that don't know, I do have a seventh grader, so he did this last year, and just seeing the growth for this year compared to last year was phenomenal. And just the comfort level about how he was able to speak about the work he's done to see where he's struggling and how he wants to improve himself was great. And I think this is a skill that many adults don't have. You know, they don't advocate for themselves, they can't actually speak for themselves in a space that will articulate where they want to go and how they want to get there. So I think this is a great opportunity that our schools are giving our students so that they can be better adults and really really to speak for themselves and know where they're going. So phenomenal work for the teachers, and it was great just to see the teachers just out and about observing and being there just if the student needed help, but for the most part, students ran the show and they were their own bosses in the session, so kudos to the school district for doing this and continuing this practice.
Thank you very much for the update. I'd just like to say, I would really appreciate the update on the comprehensive facilities process because now there's been certainly a bit of speculation in the past few months and years in terms of what the end result of that's gonna be. I think it's important to highlight and show it's a very methodical deliberative process and getting stakeholder feedback from all sorts of areas in the community to make sure, and along with the experts in those doing the demographic studies to ensure that it is truly a very informed decision. And yeah, good things take time and good decisions take good information, so I think it's good to highlight that and thank you for giving us those updates.
Yeah, the only comment I had was I was part of that workshop, I was part of both workshops, but the Portrait of a Graduate workshop in particular, one of the questions that came up was, who's the keeper of the Portrait of a Graduate? So the district worked, you know, really hard to come up with sort of the framework of what do we want these kids to be able to exhibit in adulthood? Like as they graduate, what are they going to be? And not like an A-plus math student, but like a creative thinker and things like that, so I, I think that the conclusion of that was telling. It was the community, the stakeholders. So Lucas Giger doesn't own that, we don't own that as school committee, the town does. So as we go into these budget discussions, it's good to kind of keep in the back of our minds, this is what we are all getting behind in order to provide that. You know, we have to, we have to give the schools the resources they want, so I just thought that was a really good workshop to reinforce how much work was done to try to kind of conceptualize what are we trying, what's our output? What are we trying to create when we're educating these kids? Great, great workshop. I thought it was great.
Thanks for the updates.
Thank you very much. I just want to echo my colleague's sentiment too about that student-led conferences. It's such a fantastic program, really kind of pulls in a lot of those pieces about the Portrait of a Graduate too. And so it's great and I would love to, you know, hopefully we kind of continue to see that over the years too. Wonderful program. All right, but then moving along, have the superintendents recommended FY twenty-five budget.
Okay, we're gonna relocate to the classrooms.
Yeah. And as doing that, I just want to speak real quick just to the community. For everybody, you know, in the audience chambers who are showing up, there's a lot of people online and at home as well. Really appreciate, you know, this is so important as we kind of start to hear about the budget. And so really thank you all for your time and commitment to watching these presentations, so thank you very much.
All right, thank you. So just to start off, I appreciate, I see a lot of people in attendance as well. Mr. Callahan, that's excellent. The information we're sharing tonight is a recommendation on what we believe we need to be able to do business in a way that allows us to create some stability within the district. So with that said, we'll walk through this whole piece. When I get to the slide on the timeline, I'll pause and kind of explain a little bit more, but I just wanted to start off by saying what we're really looking to do is to really invest in our future, in the future of Franklin Public Schools, which ultimately is in the future of Franklin and the town. And this is really important, so the information shared, the asks, what we're looking to do is all connected to that idea of investing in our future. So just big picture, as this budget was developed, we tried to focus in and hone in on, as you already mentioned, right? Aligning with our Portrait of a Graduate, but also looking to make sure that we have equitable access for learning across all of our schools, levels, and grades, and that we're providing the resources and the training and the technology and the facilities to support the students and the teachers that we have, educators we have in the district. We've spent some time on this. I know if you were in those focus groups, you certainly did, but ultimately, this is what we're looking to achieve for our kids. We want our kids to be able to walk across that stage and come out the other end with not just the the content knowledge they need to be successful, but the drive to be curious, to problem-solve on their own, to set goals. I thought it was very interesting during our visioning, we had the president and dean of college join us, and he talked about what he looks for in a student when they apply to his college. And he talked a lot about, it's not the four-point-oh GPA, but it's someone who demonstrated a commitment to following through on their schoolwork and worked hard to earn grades that could put them in a competitive space. But just as important was, what are they driven by? What do they hope to achieve if they come here? What's their, what are their goals? How do they see our college as a way for them to continue to climb and reach their goals? So that's a selective thing. People who are living in town, kids have to go to school, but ultimately, I don't think we're much different. I think we want kids that have goals and are driven to reach them, so by the time they get that diploma, they have the ability to move on, and that's what we're here to support. So with that said, moving on, you've seen this when you improve the district improvement plan. These are the strategic objectives. These areas are where we take that Portrait of a Graduate and then try to unpack it and get down into a more granular level around the district objectives. What are we looking to achieve for kids? We want them to be emotionally well, we want them to be behaviorally regulated. We want them to be working with teachers who are high-quality teachers, providing excellent instruction, that they have the curriculum resources they need to teach those subjects in those areas, that we're communicating effectively with one another and with our community, and finally, that we're providing equitable opportunities for all kids that are inclusive. So these are the ideas that drive the goals. You may recall from the fall, school improvement plans talked more specifically about what that looks like at Oak Street. What does that look like at Andy Sullivan at the high school? So just to give a sense of about us, we have ten schools currently. We have approximately five hundred, four hundred and ninety-four full-time equivalent teachers. In general, in total, you're seeing a number there of one thousand two hundred and thirty-four. That's every employee. And that's important to note that that's everyone from a coach to a crossing guard, to a teacher, to a van driver, anyone within the community who has a role. There could be a point-two person. Right, and substitutes that rotate through all of our buildings, so that's where that number comes from, just to give you context. It's everyone that's employed in some way. You'll notice the chapter seventy state aid at twenty-nine. We've talked about being held harmless. This year, we're being held harmless by twelve million. Last year was eleven, approximately. Am I right on that thought? And the per pupil expenditure, we have some slides that we'll dive into these in more detail, but wanted to provide just an overview, kind of big picture, who we are and how do we compare with the state and the district? So this is the budget timeline. I just would walk through. So July through October, November, December, we've covered and updates throughout the school committee. So I'll jump into January. We held a budget workshop. We used to do these years ago, and we brought this back post-COVID to try to bring back the idea of having a workshop with school committee that involved all of you and our administrators, our principals, and central office staff to talk through the drivers, the priorities, learn together, talk through some of the obligations we have and things that help, that make up our budget, but that also provides some airtime for the room, the folks in the room, which included school committee and our principals, to kind of air and talk through just their experiences, what their schools, what they're hearing from their staff, and try to create just an open chain of communication. And I found that to be very helpful. A lot of good feedback came out of that that helped us develop the budget that you see before you today, that you will hear about. And from there, we've moved to the budget subcommittee. We had a joint budget subcommittee, and we continue to work through this process. If you look in March, we have a joint budget subcommittee tomorrow, as Ms. Sullivan mentioned, and then we would move into, as part of our processes, tonight is, here's the budget, here are the facts, here's the request that I'm recommending. You then have an open hearing, which is the next school committee meeting in two weeks. After that, and you've heard in that open hearing, the following meeting is an action to take a vote to approve, to approve the budget, which would be the recommendation at that time. So just kind of walks through the timeline of where we're at at this stage. So getting into the actual development, we've set some priorities in this budget. The first being class sizes that are within a recommended range. We're looking at our K-two classrooms being eighteen to twenty-two at the top, and you're looking at your three through grade twelve, between twenty to twenty-four is the recommended class size that we have within the district. We've also looked to try to provide as much support for our students through an SEL lens and a behavioral lens, and we've also looked to implement literacy implementation pre-K to twelve, right? Along with other initiatives which you've heard about through the school improvement plans. Number four is determining the current positions we have funded in ESAR. As it's been said for many years, ESAR is going away, so decisions around the positions that live with ESAR, bringing those into the budget is another priority. A lot of mental health counselors are in the budget in that area, and we want to make sure that we are trying to keep moving our district forward and not backwards. So with those funds going away, how do we build a budget that incorporates and carries forth that much-needed work? And finally, it's around trying to provide, continue to sustain a high-quality level of education that our teachers are providing and want to continue to provide, that the community expects in Franklin that we are providing, and that's how this budget has basically been built and put together. So the benefit, I already talked about the ranges. We're fortunate in Franklin to have a very talented faculty and staff that educate our kids every day. We'll talk a little bit about the volatility when we don't have a budget that is consistent and stable and what that can do to that type of work and the erosion factors that can happen. And also, we want to make sure that we're providing a well-rounded experience that allows students to participate in academics and also co-curricular, mission-driven clubs, just fun activity clubs, and in addition to athletics, all the things that we expect that our students will have opportunities to are important, and those are the impacts of this budget. And finally, the needs, the technology needs. We're fortunate through the capital process to renew our Chromebooks, for example, for students, one-to-one devices. But ultimately, within our budget, there are other needs, counseling resources, other pieces of the work that we do every day with kids that are needed to be supported through this budget process. So I'll kick it over to Bob to just talk through the actions so far.
So as we started to think about the idea of the level service budget and what else we may need, we had to consider the commitments that we already have, that we need to continue with. One of those are the contractual increases to salaries. We have mandated requirements through special ed programming that we've got, that have to be met. We also, like everyone, deal with the costs of health insurance and their continual rise, and we know that those are going up by nine and a half percent next year, so we have to incorporate that as a consideration. And then there are other variables, contracted services like transportation, van for out-of-district drivers, students, so those sorts of things. And then recognizing that the number of grants that we've gotten, like ESAR and some of the others, were decreasing in value as far as what we anticipate receiving, and recognizing that last year was an anomaly. You put a significant portion of your existing revolving accounts against the budget to be able to maintain the services as much as possible. And that's not sustainable, so there, the amount of money going against the budget from the revolving accounts is significantly less in this budget than it was last year. Both, you know, beyond the sustainability from a practical perspective, it's not a good practice to deplete your resources as well. So these are all things that start us a little bit behind where we would have liked to have been to, as we start to build a budget. We have to consider these things.
Take this out of work and then this one.
So these kind of quantify the obligations that we have. So you see, we start with a seventy-one, almost a seventy-two million dollar appropriation from FY twenty-four. Just the contractual obligations represent one-point-seven million dollars of an increase. The ESAR fund salaries, maintaining all of those positions, since we deem them as necessary, is another half a million dollars. The increase in out-of-district and special ed costs and services, two-point-two million dollars. Our special ed transportation also has gone up one-hundred thousand dollars. We're finding that with the transancy of a lot of students moving from location to location, we have a much larger responsibility for transportation of homeless students. It's a number that had a zero-dollar amount in it, in that line item previously. It's a number that had a zero-dollar amount in it, in that line item previously. This year, we're approaching $80,000 and the year's not over. So we budgeted, we're seeing that as an increase. Our in-district students also are transported by van drivers, so there's an increased expense there, partly because we are trying to keep more of our students here in district, but they do need to be transported in the smaller vehicles. I mentioned the increase in health insurance and then a dollar amount for the decrease in grant revolving funds of $1.2 million. So that gives you a grand total of $6.5 million that we're obligated to either as additional expenses or a decrease in revenue that we've got to account for in some way. So you'll see that within this, within this budget.
So we've broken this down into two areas. We have general education and special education, just to provide a little more context to the work that we do. So I'm going to have Dr. Rogers take this slide and just explain a little bit about the general education, and then Mrs. Morano will follow up with special education as well.
Thank you. So when you think about general education expenses, the first bullet here, we're talking about all programs outside of really athletics, self-sustaining programs or special education that are including it in a gen ed budget. So you could be talking professional learning for the district. You can be talking about band or chorus at the middle school or world language through the middle school and high school. So all of those programmatic opportunities that we have for students are included in the gen ed budget, and those are just to name a few. Your second bullet there will outline the staff, the cost for staff, you know, your gen ed classroom teachers, special subjects. So if you think about your high school physics teachers, business teachers, again, science teachers, history teachers, those folks, nurses, guidance counselors, and administrators are all included in the general education budget. And then we talk a lot about our instructional materials. So supplies at the building level, supplies, just the, you know, you think about science classrooms and the replenishment of those consumable materials, workbooks and the replenishment of those materials. In addition to any other curriculum resources that may not be covered through a capital, through the capital process are included in the general education budget. So, you know, we have some high school courses that are looking to do some curriculum revision in the coming years, so that would be included here. In addition to technology, the, those pieces are included here as well. And then extracurricular activities such as clubs, athletics, art programs. So when you talk about stipending coordinators and things of that nature to coordinate the clubs and programs, to oversee that, those are all budgeted within the gen ed budget. And lastly, would be transportation expenses you'll see delineated within this as well.
Regarding special education, we are required by law to provide the support services, specialized instruction that our students with disabilities need to access the curriculum. And those, unfortunately, those costs can fluctuate depending on the number of students we have with disabilities, their needs, and the amount of equipment they need and specialized instruction they need. It's sometimes challenging to budget for those incoming students and the student needs that we have. Our special educators do a phenomenal job, and as required by law, to educate our students with disabilities in the least restrictive environment, which means in district, right? We start with providing them support and services in their general ed classroom, and then if they need more support, we might pull them out of the classroom. And then if we see that really they need that small group instruction, specialized instruction with specific methodologies, that we might recommend, the team might recommend a specialized program. We are fortunate in this district and very proud in this district that we have approximately nine specialized programs from K through 12, both through age of 22 for our students. Not only is it a cost benefit, as you'll see in my next slide, to educate our students in district, because it is a cost benefit, it's cheaper. However, it's better for the student, and not just the student with disabilities who gets to be in their neighborhood school with their typical peers and neurodevelopment peers, but also for the other students in those classrooms to really go through their educational path and journey with students with disabilities and really appreciate and the differences that each and every student brings to our town and to our classrooms. Next slide?
Yep.
So here we have a historical perspective of our out-of-district costs. So if we are unable to provide an appropriate program for our students here in district, there might be circumstances where we need to provide, send them to an out-of-district program. And again, we first go with the least restrictive environment into maybe a public day program, like an area, district, or a collaborative program, or maybe a private day program. Our number of students in out-of-district programs has been relatively stable. I know it looks a little bit all over the place, but really, it went down in '23, '24. There could be many reasons for that. We've had students age out, so once they turn 22, they're no longer with us. We've also tried really hard, Mr. Duquette and Ms. Gravlin have tried really hard to work with families and students to bring them back to district, to our specialized programs, if possible. Or we've looked at different placements if they require a less restrictive environment than maybe where they started. So we do have a little bit of a savings from '22, '23. But we also, this year, wanted to give you a little cost analysis of an in-district program versus out-of-district costs. And I really looked at our four programs, Poles, which is our program for students with autism, Reach, which is our social-emotional program, our Net Partner Program, which is one of our newer programs, and our Strive Program. And I picked these four programs because these are typically, these could be students that might have to go to an out-of-district program if we didn't have this specialized program in our district. And as you see, this is significant cost savings to keeping our students in district and sending them out of district, because not only is the tuition high in those out-of-district programs, especially out of the significant increase that the OSD placed on us last year, but also we have to pay those transportation costs, which are astronomical, in my opinion. So it is much more cost-effective to keep them in district.
So thank you. Just to point out, if you look at the bottom grid, $3 million. And if those students, you see those number of students in those four programs, if they were to be transported and educated outside of the district, that's the, you can see the cost right there. So we've been asked before, what does the Franklin Public Schools do to get creative? What does the Franklin Public Schools do to find ways in which we can save money? What I'd say first off is, if I was raising a child and I had an opportunity to educate them in the district and in the town in which we live, and the program was appropriate for their education, I would feel, I would feel good about the idea that we have these in-district programs. So there's that piece of it. The second piece is, there is, there is a cost savings to it. But I, I can't, I can't, I know Mrs. Morano was a huge advocate for all of our students that we have within the district, and particularly students who are in district or out of district. And I know that we share an interest in making sure that we're providing the right environment. And the right environment, if it's within the four walls that we have in Franklin, then that's what we do. And there is something to be said for how we try to think creatively about that, so. Wanted to point that out and put it into context when you see numbers around special education. There's much more of a story there that we can tell and should tell. Okay, so this budget is based on basically a level service plus budget, okay? So to put that in context, it's really around trying to arrive at a recommendation for you that takes into account what we have determined we need to carry forth in our current budget and our current, how we're, how we're living today, but also incorporate other aspects. So the plus pieces around trying to look to partially restore specific program services to the district. So when you look at this, you'll see that we looked at the FY '24 budget. We looked at the, all the mandates that were required to meet. We looked at steps for personnel steps, longevity, all the collective bargaining agreements, and we looked at all of the other increases under any other existing contract, which include contracts with out-of-district, but everything has been included in there. Those, that's the first piece of looking at it. We've also tried to look at incorporating other aspects that we have lost more recently due to some budget cuts. So we'll talk about those in more detail, and I'm going to kick it over to you, Bob.
So you've got some narrative here that talks a little bit about what we're trying to do with this budget. So first is obviously retain the same levels, levels of teaching and learning for all students. So that's maintaining materials, staff, looking at class size, making sure that we are staying within what we've identified as recommended numbers. Also to look at affording some increases from the previous year to maintain programming. So trying to bring a couple of things back. And then additional staff and supplies to ensure we maintain class size and partially restore some of the FY '24 cuts. And we'll provide some detail on what those are. So to put some dollars to this, you see that the FY '24 budget that was approved last June was about $72 million. We're proposing an $81.3 million budget, which represents a dollar increase of $9.3 million, which is 12.96%, almost 13%. Keep in mind, this is the town appropriation. This is not an all-in budget. We have other sources of revenue that go against our total spending. So this is only the town appropriation that you are seeing here as we look at this.
As we look here, you'll see the word stabilize. The, just the big overall picture of this was around looking to advocate for the district stabilize. We recognize that that number is more than we are collecting in revenue from the town. But I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't stand up here in front of you and advocate for schools and advocate for what we need and what we need to stabilize. You will recall from the budget update, the, it was a virtual meeting because of the snow day, but ultimately, you will recall, it was the tale of four budgets, and I had put out a model around surviving, which is basically just repeating what we have today. Stabilizing is partially restoring, and then there was thriving, if you recall, which would require more visioning and more, it would be a higher cost tag, but would include looking more comprehensively in a very large picture of things that have either been eroded over the last 20 years, but ultimately, to make those decisions into that detail, what we've done is we've quantified what we believe we need to stabilize and get stronger footing as a district in order to continue to do business and start to make, make headway into catching up to where we believe we need to be. So in here, carrying forth positions that we have, including the addition of teachers. You'll notice the recommendation of the five K-2 teachers. That's to keep, keep the averages in those classes below 22 students in the class. So K1 and 2. You'll notice other positions in there, which speak to the growing population of in-district program students for our Strive Program, require an additional teacher and ESP. We already talked about the value in the in-district program and how that works. You'll notice .8 at the ECDC. We've had an increase, and we've also had schedule change, and I know that the FTEs related to that is cumulative. So there are some part-time positions that this number would make them hold. Behavioral support is something that I think at the, at the school level, we experience in what I, what I know other departments experience in call volume or, you know, other areas. For us, that would be student behavioral issues or responses needed. So I'm trying to provide as much support to our students, our teachers, and having the right folks in the room with the proper certifications to help us. So a BCBA, and I think, Paul, can you describe a little bit about what a BCBA is and does?
Sure, a BCBA analyzes. So if a student is having behavioral challenges, they will go in and they will do what we call a functional behavioral analysis, which is through observation and different other measures. We'll look at the behaviors and use the data to determine what is causing those behaviors. Then we can put the appropriate supports in place and plans in place to help that student regulate their behavior or change the environment so that student can be regulated in the classroom setting. That BCBA mostly doesn't work directly with students, but really provides that consultation, modeling, and coaching for our general ed staff, our special educators, and our school professionals.
You'll notice at the middle level, just based on class sizes, case numbers, adding an additional teacher, a special educator, and ESP to, at the middle level, in addition to an ABA tutor, which is an applied behavioral analyst, who would work in a similar vein to...
In our Net Partner Program.
In our, in our program. And then at the high school, to create more parity among the team chairs and to have the support we need around special education in the department, is adding .5 to the team chair position. In addition to a teacher, you'll see there, you know that we required financial literacy, for example, as a requirement, and we have an expanding business program with high interests at the high school. We've put this in as what could be expected to be a business teacher, to teach those courses in one that's required, along with other offerings. And you'll notice some other positions related to special education. A librarian to, not only for the resource of a librarian, but to remain in accreditation standing with NIASP, having a librarian as a requirement. And we cut a librarian due to our budget, but ultimately, that's not a decision that you, you don't want to be in a situation where you're not accredited. I mean, you don't want to have, not have someone there. And I do see a lot of value with bringing a certified librarian and being a specialist to a school, schools that have them have great success in not only supporting students, but teachers with information, with texts, with literacy implementation, all the pieces that come with it and that role. You'll notice the .8 van driver. As you look to increase your in-district programming and look at the number of students that you have in the district, these are some of the natural investments that you make, because you need an in-district van driver to now transport kids from their house to one of our programs we have in our school. So that's where that number comes from. And finally, you'll see at the district level, digital learning integrations. These are positions that we did cut a few years ago. We are in the process of a multi-year phased implementation to add touch view screens, which replace projectors like this one. In all of our schools, we've done this pre-K through 8 at this point. 9 through 12 is the next, the high school, is the next school to receive those. We received the appropriation from the, from the town. It was approved for the year one of two for phased implementation to replace those projectors. When we did that, we needed DLIs at that time to work with our teachers, to train them, to be there for support, incorporate opportunities for professional development, in addition to a host of other jobs that have fallen to a variety of other people within the system when those positions went away out of necessity in order to have, to beat our budgetary number last year. So anything else to add to that? Bob, Nina, Paula, anyone else? So this is really an important slide, and I would key in on this because, to me, it's meant to be framed as an investment, but the more I worked on it and reflected, it actually created a bit of a cautionary tale about what you, what you have, that you stabilize and invest, and what you lose if you don't. So I'm going to frame this from a positive standpoint, but I want us all thinking about these things that are on this list. We often hear Franklin does so well, and I think Han was a great example of that. And we have kids who do wonderful things, and we have staff doing wonderful things with students, with the resources that we have. And I think we've hit a point where, we're at a breaking point. And I say that with all seriousness as a superintendent, as a parent who has children in the district, and as a taxpayer. This is, this is serious. And the stabilized budget, preserve what we have, cannot be understated because we've seen things go, kind of slowly get reduced along the way. And some of them, they go away, and, you know, we don't see, we don't ever know the realized potential of if we kept some of the programming that we've let go along the way. We only know what we have realized. And when I think about things on here, when I think about our AP programming that we offer, with the number of courses that we offer, in a stable budget, these things, these continue and they should continue. The fine and performing arts, not just the success of our theater club and program, but thinking about the courses offered. We offer stagecraft, we offer theater as a class. These are things that we should be proud of, and we've seen the benefit of when you invest in these types of things, what the kids can do, and what the adults can get out of these students and the connections they make. And I can go down this list, but I will call out a few others. When I think about our Franklin Arts Academy, our senior projects, the high school electives that we have remaining, those pieces, and what they do and the feedback we receive from students in the portrait of a graduate, where some of the best classes they ever took were some of their elective courses that they had interest in, whether it's through the arts or... the arts or through a variety of offerings that we have, whether it's video production, those types of things. Middle school teaming, I wouldn't take that for granted. That's something that we have in Franklin, and I know that with our enrollment, we've had split teams and different models and different ways. I think there's a true benefit to having teams of teachers work together and support the students so that kids don't get lost in the shuffle. And having worked as a middle school educator in this town on a team, I've seen the true value of working together in those areas and what it can mean to kind of, we heard a little bit about student-led conferences, for example, and the amount of work that goes into planning and organizing that with teammates is not to be understated. You'll notice in here, what we have and need to preserve, our co-curricular activities. We've seen this year, I know I've felt it, the loss of middle school clubs and activities, not having transportation available to those students after school, or a place for them to be with us after school in an extracurricular sense at the middle level. These are things that we're adding back, I actually didn't mention that, and I will, adding back into this budget proposal so that we can have those opportunities like we do at the high school now. But my fear is by not supporting the budget, we could end up in a situation where we're now looking not only at middle school not coming back, but maybe having the creep factor of moving into the high school clubs. So I say these as opportunities that we have to keep, and they make up what our schools are all about. The last is athletics, unified sports, clubs. The extracurriculars are also a part of a well-rounded education and system, and I think we've seen success in those areas as well. I know you're all probably familiar with that, and these are all things that I want to see us preserve and have, and with a stabilized, healthy budget, it's a great segue into the right-hand column. So these are all things we have, let's celebrate. That's what's included in the budget, is keeping all of that, keeping all of that going. And on the right-hand side, we often hear about what can we be doing to innovate? So I struggle sometimes with the conversation around what can we do to innovate when we spend our time figuring out whether we're going to have two sections of kindergarten or three, and the money involved with that decision, and rolling into a school year, whether we're going to have 24 students, or can we afford to start with 17 in June, knowing that we may get some movements, only to arrive at that. But we spend, we spend most of May and June doing that when that's the time where planning for the next week happens, but we're still planning what our team is going to look like for that next season. So I say that to all of you as someone who's invested in this community and invested in seeing that we get the things that really, really are important for this district. When you see expand, innovate, and restore in a stable budget, we can still look to innovate and still look to utilize every resource we have to build the partnerships that we want. You'll notice there, these are just ideas that, some of them cost money, some of them don't, but they require bandwidth, organization, and they require you to have courses, for example, in an early college. You need to have the right set of teachers with five years' teaching experience, the right elective pathways and courses that you offer. If you wanted to have a biotech pathway, for example, you need to have a series of courses at your high school that kids can take beyond biology, which is a core requirement, that allow you to show that you've demonstrated a pathway with a variety of themed courses that allow a kid to move through. But there are opportunities here, and with the correct visioning and support, we can start to align our courses, look to work with our teachers to discuss what those could look like, those elective opportunities. How can we leverage our theater arts program that's bustling, high interest, and create a pathway there? Our business program, students have demonstrated a very high interest in the business opportunities they have in Franklin. Can we turn that into a career pathway? Can we look to tap into some of the Chapter 74 career and technical education resources available? They won't invest in us if we don't invest in ourselves. And we have been working with the Franklin Fire Department. They have a need. They have, they're looking, they have a void they're trying to fill right now. They're trying to find good people to serve in the fire department. We've engaged in conversations with them, with the whole guidance department, the administration, some central office folks, and the fire department around. How can we build a pathway where students have the ability to earn their EMT credential by the time they walk across the stage? And then that allows you to start your paramedic, which is required to be a firefighter in town, the minute you walk across the stage. So these are things that, with a stable budget, when we're not, when we're able to get the room to plan and organize, these all can happen, and none of these were asks for money. These are just outcomes of having the proper amount of teachers in the right class sizes and the right amount of offerings in order to move a program forward, instead of a reduction mindset where we cut and try to figure out ways in which we can continue to reduce. And I think the restoration piece, I have, I've shown the list, I showed it last year, the 20 years of cuts that was compiled from a variety of folks who contributed to that document. I think there's a lot of things on there that could come back, but not without the appropriate kind of visioning and determination of what we could be doing. So I know the number's big at this point, but it's the number that I feel would, we would recommend to move forward in order to try to move through our budget process in order to restabilize this. Final thing I'll show you here is, you saw the 12.96 was the stabilize. The survive is basically if we just carry forth the people we have here now, like in the district today, anything below that will require cuts. So any increase below that number puts us at a deficit that we would need to make reductions. So that would mean, just like last year, the asks that we put out, when it came down to the reality of the budget, we had to kind of scrap what we were looking to add and then go a little deeper, which is how we ended up in late May in the scenario we were And here are just some impacts. You see reductions to, you know, obviously with larger class sizes, you see reductions to different areas of your aspect. I would include in here, leadership counselors, all the programs that we offer that are non, not required. We really try, if you think about it from a budgeting standpoint, you have to do all the compliance-driven things first before you can offer anything else. So I just would say that those are the pieces. The other thing is fees, increasing fees. In order to run programs that have fees, this would require us to review those fees and determine what those should be in order to support the work and look at what we're trying to do. You'll notice programmatic cuts. I think this one is, you know, without trying to overstate this, I don't have like a plan in my head on what program, I hope no one asked me that question, but the idea is if we don't have enough money to fund, things will have to be reduced and cut. So those could come in the form of positions, but it might make sense in some scenario where it's like, you know what, maybe this whole program's cut because of just the paying on how far off we are from trying to fund field of team. You'll see here, this is more co-curricular, looking at activities. And I think these are the two, the two at the bottom I want to hone in a little bit on. It's just around the negative impacts of a unstable budget, create a little volatility, well, create volatility, not a little. They create an atmosphere of uncertainty. And when you have a few years where you string together, where you've created that type of environment, it gets really hard to recruit. When I first was hired, we had 117 vacancies, and it took us the whole summer into the fall to try to recruit actively and find people. Now, in our industry, in many industries, it's been, it's been harder to find people to employ. But I'm just speaking in our specific context. It's really hard, and it's become quite competitive from a hiring standpoint. So school districts, we're all vying for the same candidates through basically the same system of school spring, right? And people can put their resumes out, they can check their contracts, they can do a lot to do their own homework. So turnover creates that culture of volatility, and I think that's an area where instability comes in. The connections kids make with adults that might be gone. And unfortunately, you know, we lose some really good people who start with us, and we can't keep because the budget doesn't allow it, and it puts us in a situation I don't think we want to be in, and that's what's led to the budget. So this was said last time, but just to give you a sense of the less-than-level service, level service, and then this level service plus. I'm going to filter back, I don't want anyone to get sick, I'm going to move back a couple of slides to get to, to, I didn't mention on the right-hand side, this budget also includes bringing back our middle school clubs and activities and transportation, also the after-school behavioral support program at our middle level, and it brings back a variety of different supplies that need to be updated and revamped. So this information is all included in the budget book that will be posted prior to the public hearing next week for everyone to see. For example, we did put in a very transparent graphic of every single school and the class sizes and how we arrived at the recommendation of adding teachers and why, to try to provide as much transparency as possible so people can see exactly what we're talking about when we ask for what we asked for. So with that said, anything else to add to that, Bob?
No, I think as you, I think it's important that Lucas's point not be lost, that you are at a tipping point. You've had several years where you've had a difficult budget, you've been able to band-aid it through one-time funds like Esser and some others, which have just created an even larger cliff for you because you didn't fund those through your local funding. You know, so it's, if it's not taken care of at some point, it's just going to continue to spiral, and it is exponential. I think the other thing to keep in mind, tying back to the idea of competitiveness as you're talking about hiring staff, you also need to think about retaining students. Students have choice now, and if the opportunities aren't there and you continue to erode the programs that they have access to, they're going to make those choices, which are going to have even more of a negative impact on your revenue because your enrollment will continue to go down even more so. So I think, you know, it's extremely important that the district addresses the financial challenges that they have right now so that you can continue to offer the programming that you have and provide the quality education that you've been able to provide to this point, but that you will be able to if this continues. So I just wanted to end this.
Do you want to hit on the next few slides around net school spending and comparables? Where do we sit in the, we've talked a lot about the Franklin context and the history of our budget and our needs, but I want to kind of expand it, where do we fit within the larger context?
Sure. So you see per pupil comparison here to the state average. In the budget book, you'll see a broader context where we compare the district to many other districts, both kinds of community, from similar perspectives socio-economically as well as geographically. But you can see that we are a good distance below the state average, almost $3,000 in district per pupil, and $2,500 for out-of-district students. And I think this number, when you, if you looked at this historically, that funding differential is higher this year than it was last year, and it continues to go up. So it's something to keep in mind. Franklin ranks in the 25th percentile, meaning 75 percent of Massachusetts districts spend more per pupil on education than we do. And then you see a graphic net, I thought there was a graphic. So you can see a graphic depiction of that, and you see Franklin in blue, down in the bottom, bottom 25 percent. And this is, every district is represented by a blue dot on that, on that graph, they're just not all identified by name. Net school spending, again, it's part of a formula. You can see the Chapter 78, plus what's required to be spent by the town, and the state determines what that required local contribution is. And you see that Franklin's required to spend $79.2 million. You see our budget is at, our request is at 81, so we're a little bit above that. So I think, you know, it's kind of self-explanatory. Again, we spent 13.2 million more than required. That may seem as though it's a big number, but again, comparatively, is only 18 percent more than what's required, and still falls in the bottom third within the state comparatively. So 67 percent spend more than 18 percent over what's required.
Just a note too, the state average is 27 percent over, so we're at 13.2. 27 is the number.
So this is, this is a graphic depiction of where Franklin is as far as their combined wealth. So property value and income, they are in the top 15 percent in the Commonwealth, yet they are in the bottom third in net school spending. So you see a pretty significant difference in the money that they represent as far as wealth versus what they're spending. If you look at other communities that are in that same situation near the top and look at their net school spending, you would find that it is much higher. They're in line with the Wellesleys, the Westons, Lexington's, but not at a spending level.
So just to hone in on next steps in the process, just to give you an overall timeline, you'll see here, right's the first square one, right there, March 24th. We move forth, we will have a joint budget subcommittee tomorrow to continue this conversation in context and in partnership. I know the town administrator and I have been working together regarding this, regarding the funding issues that we have, and are going to be co-presenting information to the joint budget subcommittee right at this roster tomorrow night. We also have in here that there will be a school committee budget hearing in two weeks, which is the 19th of March, which is part of our process that we've had in place. The first meeting in April then would become an opportunity for budget discussion and vote. And then moving forward, that budget, the approved school committee budget goes forth to the FINCOM for their meetings, which will occur in May. Schools are slated, I believe, from March 15th, remembering correctly. And then it goes to town council for their budget hearings, and then ultimately a final approval from town council, which will occur at the end of May, based on the, whatever, wherever we land on that in this place. So as more information becomes available around the process of different dates and times, this is still evolving. We are meeting on Friday to talk further collaboratively with the town to just try to make, after the joint budget subcommittee meeting tomorrow, take the information, the feedback, and then come together with a smaller group to discuss and strategize what the next step should be, and that will occur on Friday morning. Happy to take any questions?
I'm going to, in just a moment, I'll start over my left. First, I just want to thank you so much for all the work that's been going into this. You know, it's already, it's a heck of a burden to establish one budget. We asked you to do multiple this time around. And it's just incredibly important just to get this information out there to the community at large. And, you know, and I applaud you as well. It's just factual. You know, there's no scare tactics involved, there's no kind of, you know, performance going on with any of these cuts. going on with any of these cuts, it is just, you know, they've been talking about that fiscal cliff for years and years and years, and, you know, we're at the precipice now. And it's just a matter of saying, you know, here's what that next step could look like. So, again, thank you so much for all the work that's gone into this. But with that said, I'll open up to the rest of my committee.
That's awesome, that's awesome presentation, you know, kind of you covered from the transportation to technology, like I saw each and every step, and we'll discuss more tomorrow in subcommittee meeting.
Thank you.
Detail. Thank you.
Awesome presentation, like, so good. I know that as someone who kind of liaisons between the town counselors and, you know, discussing this override and like, what are we gonna do to help the schools, they continue to ask us for these stories, and you articulated what's at stake and what we're missing out on, and what you could be doing even more so, in a way that was like inspiring. It almost made me want to cry, that this is like what we could be doing with our kids. I mean, intrinsically, I have two middle schoolers, so to me, I'm like, ah, this is like, this is gonna be amazing, and I've been part of these visioning workshops. I want to kind of address the community a little bit and just ask people to come tomorrow, you know, check in, because we understand, we've been part of these workshops, we've been part of a budget subcommittee, we've been sort of closely watching this, we've been tasked by the community to make sure that we get it done. So, our schools are held to such high standards of making decisions, it's always based on amazing data, just everything is so data-driven, and sometimes it doesn't translate to the general public. It's like you guys are forced to be prosecuting attorneys and prove your case, and it's like, we want cameras in the classroom and tell us exactly what's going on. I was at the art show at Escape Into Fiction, and, you know, the town administrator was there, and he was like, this is, look at this work, it's amazing, like, what's, this is what the community's seeing, this is why we're like, what's wrong? And it was within earshot of the art teacher. So, she was like, these kids in this art class, these seniors, these AP art seniors are not getting, the kids in elementary are not getting anywhere near what these seniors who are graduating got. So, there's like a generational sort of divide of like what our kids are being given, and it stinks because, you're right, it's like, you know, a lot of it's elementary, middle, and we're not sort of, you know, creating the farm team, and, you know, breeding this to be able to like have these, like Ahan and these like Deca, like lights-out students. And it's opportunity costs, and it's devastating, and it wouldn't fly in the private sector whatsoever, because if you had an investment that would give you returns like that, it would be a no-brainer for the board. So, you know, our superintendent, he's, I don't want to talk about you in the third person, but he's been in this town 20 years, stakeholder, kids in the school, I saw the announcement of when he was hired last year, you don't really see everybody aligning in support of this, like, the entire auditorium was on, they were flipped to their feet for like their new boss, which is kind of a funny thing to see happen. So, it's like, we have a culture that's there, and we can grab it, and we can be the district that, you know, people like Amber Gergen talk about us being, and you guys do such a good job, because we do produce these kids right now, but it's declining, and you guys know it is, and it's not a reflection on you, it's like you can only do so much with like what you're given. I want to mention that, you know, people say the enrollment's gone down, we have to make these changes, but when enrollment goes down in a district, it's not nice and neat in a package, it's like throughout many different classes, and you can't just say, okay, we're just gonna like shut down this particular class and have this teacher laid off or whatnot and save that salary money. It's like, it's a couple kids here, a couple kids there, and then kids move into the district, and it's like an evolving, like, live, breathing entity. So, I, it really just hurts us when enrollment goes down a little bit because our state funding goes down. I caught that we're, so we're spending 13 million more than what's required. Is that, Dr. Guss, does that include the whole homeless money?
Yes.
So, we're spending 13 million more, but if we lost that 12 million, it would be, we'd be at the bottom, we'd be the lowest in the state.
Not the lowest, there would be about five, lower.
You know this, okay.
I do.
I was gonna ask, because, I mean, it's dangerous statistic to even convey to the One Franklin Group that if we ask for a $14 million override, that would take us to 27 million, which is the average. So, that's a scary thought to just like yearn to be average.
Keep in mind, the number that's included, the things that are included in net school spending are also things that aren't part of our budget, they're town expenses that we're responsible for.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's a little bit misleading as we look at that net school spending number.
Misleading in a way that we're a little bit better than we think we are, or a little bit worse?
A little bit worse.
Right, yeah, okay, so.
But that's true for everybody.
Right, right, right.
Everybody is calculated the same way.
Right, so that 27 million average is probably considering it too, so it's apples to apples.
Yep.
I was having lunch with a former school committee member, Verda Trahan, who everybody knows, and she found out there were kindergarten classes, Erin Gallagher can speak to this, with 25-plus kids, and that's just because things were so tight last year, so you couldn't give a little bit of wiggle room for kids moving into the district, and she was not happy about that. She was like, this is a policy we put in place, how dare you guys allow that to happen? So, I chair policy, we might have to talk about making that like more official. One of the things that I learned at the art show was that one of the art teachers has over 600 students in the elementary, they're just like, they gotta take them all in, you don't know kids' names, there's no individual attention on that. I know that the teacher's supply budgets were cut, I'm thinking about the turnover in our district. We learned the other day that over 100 of our teachers here don't have professional status, which to the public who doesn't know, that just means they've been here four years, and they're protected by the union, and they, you know, sort of feel comfortable in the district, like, I'm not gonna be pink slipped. For 100 of our teachers to think, oh my gosh, budget problems, again, I could be pink slipped, to try to retain those teachers when we don't have other sort of investment initiatives going on for keeping those teachers is just, it's impossible. For those in the public sector, private sector rather, many of us know that an awesome tool to recruit sort of entry-level people at your firm is to go after enterprise rent-a-car and Starbucks employees. They're just known for having an excellent training regimen, you get somebody from there, they're dependable, they hire good people, they train them well, you pluck them out, and they're good to go. That's what we've kind of become in Franklin, we've become like the enterprise rent-a-car of the school districts, like, great, come in here, we have awesome systems, we'll teach you, and then you can go work somewhere else, where, you know, maybe they have like a, I remember, Lucas, you were talking about like bringing a daycare facility into the district so that the teachers can have their children within the district, and that's like a perk, and you get free daycare if you teach in our district. These are the initiatives that like we're missing out on. So, if we don't get this passed, this budget that we need, this is, I don't know how we're gonna come back from this. There's just initiatives or everything that's cut. You know, we talked about the dual enrollment that we're trying to get going, which would mean that graduating seniors would have, these aren't AP classes, these are classes that, you know, you don't necessarily have to take that AP test, you can do dual enrollment, it qualifies as a college course, and you could walk into your freshman year of college, you know, with a bunch of credits and save your family $20,000. That is an awesome benefit. So, these, you guys have the best ideas about what we could be doing, so, awesome job, do the exact same thing tomorrow night, because I think you conveyed it in a way that maybe didn't sound so academia, that people just go, I don't know, the schools have never told us what they need. You did tonight, so, thank you. I'll let somebody else talk.
Well, first of all, thank you very much for, both you and your entire team for putting this together. Incredible amount of work goes into this, and it's hard work, not just for the number crunching and compiling it together, but hard to see where we're at right now, and hard to see that it's the accumulation of a number of years' worth of, yeah, cutting and just the culmination of all the situations we've been facing the past few years. Yeah, thank you for painting the picture of where we're at, just very realistically, and also where we like to be, and how that's not gonna happen right now, and how that impacts us both now and in the future with the opportunity costs that we're missing out on. Something stood out to me, just really, which I think kind of puts, not in a nutshell, but it was really stood out to me, could you go to slide 13, please? So, we're seeing here that the FY '24 budget was 71.72 million if we're rounding, but yes, 71.989. And these are all the increases that are, you know, these are things that are happening, they're out of our control, it's not us choosing to spend more. And typically, Lucas, and we have like a year-over-year, usually like a two to, somewhere 2, 2.5, 3% increase year-over-year in a typical year?
To the overall budget?
Yeah, overall budget, and most years, it's usually around a 2%, increase, or?
Your five-year average is 2.7%.
Okay. So, the increase out of districts and special ed, that's 2.2 million, so that number right there is larger than.
Two and a half percent.
That's larger than our typical year-over-year increase. So, just that one increase right there is more than we usually, and that's completely out of our control, that one thing. It's, I mean, that alone right there is just staggering, that one thing that's completely out of our control is more than we typically increase our budget completely. I mean, it's a real highlight to just where we are, and that we are really hamstrung and ready to expanding and other initiatives of.
I think we want, that's why we tried to emphasize that we don't take these numbers lightly, these aren't just like, we live these numbers, Mrs. Murano and her team live those numbers, and I think that's why we tried to convey the measures we're taking to try to retain as many students as possible within Franklin. But there is a reality that certain students are, need a level of specialized instruction and education that we just can't, we can't yet or we can't ever provide that requires them to go to schools that we don't have the capacity to have, I think. I would just say that, that number's not just a number that we throw out there, I think it's all in context to the flip side of that coin, so thank you for sharing that.
Of course, of course, yeah, and that's, again, that number's completely out of our control, and you did an absolutely phenomenal job on the previous slide to that, on slide 12, showing just an excellent breakdown of how much our in-district, in-district special ed programs, how much they save us, and to reduce that number, that 2.2 million as much as possible, and so we're actively working to reduce the number that is greater than our year-over-year typical increase as much as possible, and we're still coming up short. Yeah, that's, yeah, it's staggering, and yeah, thank you for this information, thank you for highlighting that. Another question, also if you had something else to add to that, or, I don't know, Paula, okay, thank you. So, yeah, this being characterized as the stabilize and partially restore, and you did a great job of, on slide 16 as well, kind of mentioning some of the positions and programs that are being added this year, and so, considering that this, and you kind of alluded to this, but if we mind expanding on that, so, we're just, we're talking about just stabilizing, so what was the thought process in these positions being the ones that are, this is what we really need to just kind of keep our head of the water, as opposed to some other positions?
Great question. So, obviously, we could have come here with every single request position and whatnot, and I think that number would have driven up to a number that just was not, would not even be in the realm. I mean, this is the first time this large of a number's been recommended to a school committee since I've been around, but I will tell you, back on our priorities, so when we look at trying to create class sizes that allow us to consider our enrollment, our projections, the number of students we expect to educate next year to the best we can reach that, we don't have any movements that are changing, really trying to look at class size. Looking at supports for all kids, so Esser going away, the decision to incorporate some of those counseling positions that were in Esser, we're part of trying to support that. We do have, where we're an academic institution, right, that's our goal, it's a human service, so the majority of our budget is made up from salaries, because those are the humans that make connections and teach kids every day. So, but they instruct students, so you need curriculum that's high quality, you need to make sure that your teachers have the time and the ability to educate kids in ways that we know that they can. So, these are all the pieces that factored into, so when you go to that list, it's not a comprehensive list of every single thing, it was trying to be, also come to this table and advocate for a number and a series of staffing positions that help stabilize us, so try to stabilize our budget. It's also in context, we also have to do our homework and say, hey, listen, we need to be looking at our enrollment and making sure that we're putting forth the number of teachers we believe we need to educate the students. So, you look at where, what is your enrollment look like at the elementary level? It's starting to plateau, right? It's decreased over time, it's starting to plateau. Middle school will continue to see a decrease in the number of students for a few years, then it will filter into the high school. We have to keep up with that, we can't rinse and repeat the same number of staff, so you'll notice in the budget book, we detailed this out, so you have a better sense of how that looks. But these positions were specific to, we've expanded some in-district programming, so you see the Strive teacher. We've looked at the K class sizes, I think it was referenced tonight, someone mentioned that we had to make some really tough decisions, and that's an attempt to look at those classes now and look to try to create ranges that are, put us in a good footing at this point in time when we're recommending, which is what a healthy budget should look like. You're planning for what you, we can always make decisions down the road if we need to, but ultimately trying to stabilize. And then you'll notice that most of the other levels, it's trying to put in supports and that help kind of put us on better footing in addition to some of those teacher add-ons, looking at other support positions that we need within the district to do that work. And I think I referenced a little bit, I think I gave the example of the DLIs with the rollout of over, you know, 200 touch views, which is through the capital program, which we have, that's not in your operational budget. But the impact of that is, those need to be installed and prepped and trained, and you need to get, that's part of the system, you invest in these tools, but you have to get the most out of your investment to making sure people have the support they need to use those tools. That's how we arrived at those. A thrive budget, I will tell you, the number and to try to bring back, I also think this is in context of three things. Forecasting our enrollment, assessing our facilities, which is what we're doing, and looking at our current needs within the district, and looking at recent cuts that we've had to try to bring back. So, those are all the pieces that we factored in to this budget to try to arrive at a number that we feel like we could move forward and try to advocate and build around, but ultimately, it doesn't include cuts from 10 years ago, 20 years ago, if it's not, hasn't been thought out enough to think about how it would fit within our system, so, I'm trying to think of an example, but I'll just stop there and see if I answered the question.
I think just one other thing to add to the rationale that went into making the decisions as to why we put the resources here, we're always looking at return on investment, and this isn't a profit and loss industry, it's more abstract than that, but if you put resources into kindergarten through second grade, you eliminate the need for remediation later on. need for remediation later on. And so, we're looking at this long-term as, how can we make sure that we don't need to continue to grow the supports that we've had to do at this point? And that's, that's a key way in doing that, is making sure that students have more access to educators.
Yeah. Thank you for that. This is something I wanted to ask as a follow-up, and Lucas, thank you for mentioning how this is done in this process, just through the lens of our priorities, particularly with class sizes. And like, all of these, I mean, they may seem like they're very specific, but to your point of maintaining the class sizes on our goals, these are positions that really, they have ripple effects. They, that branch out and they impact the entirety of a whole, not just a class, but a grade, an entire school, ultimately the system. These really do help all the students, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And again, mentioning mental health supports, not just serving the student that might need it in that moment, but again, by granting the teacher the adequate support that they need to...
Right. Interventionists.
Teach everyone else in the class.
Included, we didn't put them as a request because they were in ESR, but those are included. You'll see math intervention was a request from a high school. You'll notice that all the behavioral consultation occurs within the context of a whole school to look at students in special education, but also coaching for all teachers and using some of that information to deal with what we've seen. And as, and we've said this before, it's just the complexity of students and the behavioral needs that we see across the board and the teachers giving them the right tools. You know, one, one of the best tools we can give anyone is the appropriate number of kids in a room. If you really want to talk about how to move anything. So, all the investments in professional development and training, if you get the right number of kids in the room, all of those things get multiplied. And it's much eas, it's not, I don't want to say easier, it's much more manageable. I think you get more effective progress in anything you're trying to move forward, which could be their curriculum and their units when they have the right amount of kids in the room. And it could also be about behavioral, it could be about academic intervention, getting eyes on kids, and not to mention just overall connection with students, communication with families. I know, and, well, I'm dating myself, but we've been dealing with this a long time. In 2002, I had 28 students in my sixth-grade classroom. And that, and I can tell you, having had that, and then had a year where through some move-outs, I ended up with 21, 22. It's night and day. And I don't know if there's any teachers left, Mr. Vaca here? He's here. You start to look at, the numbers can, that can make a huge difference in the room, in the classroom, so.
So, to your point, the ultimate beneficiary of reducing those ratios, the ultimate beneficiaries are the students, benefactors rather. Well, thank you very much again, both you, all of you, and your entire team for all the work you put into this. And yeah, well, yeah, it'd be, well, I guess looking forward may not be the best of the greatest. But we'll do the best we can over the next few weeks and months. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Appreciate this. This is my third budget superintendent budget proposal, and definitely thorough and detailed. Appreciate the thought that was being put through this. I know there's been a lot of information that's been shared in this past hour, so just wanted to recap it, just for confirming my understanding, make sure that everybody's also in line, kind of the Cliff Notes. So, the ask is, we're asking for a, or the superintendent is recommending a $81.3 million budget for fiscal '25. It's a 12.96 percent increase. And this is for level service plus, meaning level service, keeping services that we've had in FY24, but accounting for the increases to run those exact same services in FY25, plus an additional increase of 20.1 FTE in potentially restoring some services that have been partially, have been reduced previously in the past like year or so. Is that kind of the bottom-line ask?
That is correct, and that is, that is detailed in the budget book. So, the slide deck mirrors the budget book, but the book will have that level of detail.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And I think this is one of the first budgets that I've seen that we've asked for something that we're not reducing services, because in the past, we've looked to see, okay, well, how can we manage in the constraints that we've had? But that has always resulted in, all right, what are the things that we have to cut? So, this is a step to kind of draw the line and stand and say, let's focus on maintaining the status quo and not backsliding. Is that also correct?
That is correct, and we are still feeling the ripple effects of last season's budget to this day.
Yes.
And it's not just middle school clubs and activities. That's an example that got certainly a lot of publicity, but just the effects of the reduction and then to find, to receive money in a second round was helpful because it helped us. But at that point, we had laid off and then had to recall, but people had left, and I think you remember. So, I just think like, these are examples of, take intention aside, the impact of a volatile kind of up and down budget cycle or whatnot puts us in a position of volatility, and we still look to respond. And then you, when you end up having to cut, reduce, try to rehire, to hire in our first year in the central office position roles, 170 people after July 1, that is not when you want to be hiring for the bulk of your staff in July. Ideally, you're trying to hire before that so that you have it set. You've been hiring at the time in which the market is providing the most viable candidates. So, that's not to say that you can't find viable candidates in July, that's not what I mean. But you want to be in the hiring kind of cycle, biorhythm of hiring, where you have set the team much, much sooner than June. So, the reason this budget is stabilizing is because it's putting us on more of a predictable trajectory. We know the number of teachers that we have today. We, you'll see in the budget book where they're all teaching and how many students they, we anticipate that they will have. So, there's no, there's no secrets. It's all, it'll all be, everything from this slide is provided in much further detail. But I emphasize that because I think when we have to make cuts, it comes down to, if you're a parent of a third-grade kid, and it's between having three sections to two. And that may not seem like a big deal, but if you extrapolate that out over multiple schools and multiple grade levels, you end up in situations where your class size has now gotten to that level where you don't, I think about, you know, our teaming at the middle level, you know? Due to enrollment decline, some of the teaming has had to turn to split teams. But I think it would still, you'd see a hike in class size in some of those areas that would not be recommended. So, we keep an eye on enrollment. We look, we will have to make, continue to make decisions about a variety of things that relate to schools. But when it comes to the budget, this number is, is a large number, more than we've seen. But it's ultimately in a place to try to put us in good footing and stabilize ourselves and try to work towards a common goal with the town administrator to create some shared unity and agreement on trying to move forth a budget that recognizes that the amount of money that we have to spend in town is not as much as we need as a school, but certainly to try to convey that message and then move from there.
Thank you. And this is, this is a small, you know, the dollar amount is a large amount, but it's a small step to restore kind of the, as you said, stabilize our environment. I know you'd mentioned how by investing ourselves and showing that we are stable, this will at least help us get grants and have others say, yes, you are investing in your own community, so yes, we will help you out to move forward. Is that also correct?
Correct. So, STEM grants, I know an example, we dealt with, Mr. Stark has been out there actively seeking grant opportunities to try to fund different areas of STEM. And in some of those conversations, it's been, it's come back to that idea, is that we don't invest in ourselves, no one invests in us, right? So, this idea is, we can provide curriculum, training, some even provide seed money for not just materials, but even positions if you're willing to commit to a multi-year commitment so that we're not, they're not throwing money away and someone who's not going to be doing that. We found that we need to put ourselves in a place where we're a viable candidate for some of those options. And I've been in districts where that's been the case, where we funded Project Lead-Away grant money to incorporate engineering into our high school. And without having someone to teach engineering, you can't get the benefits of what they will infuse in that. And I think I can provide you with some articles on districts locally that have been able to commit to that and have received some of that. So, I almost see this as a reinvestment. And it's an investment in our future, but it's also a reinvestment in some of these commitments. Chapter 74 money, if you have clear pathways that are developed, you can, you can apply for those monies, funding, to go to build out programming. So, all of this is in context of stabilizing, resetting, and we try to come forth with the number that we feel we need to be able to do that.
Great, thank you. And you had a slide where it showed around the retention rate as well. So, I feel like by doing this and showing that we're investing in this district, teachers and educators and staff are willing to come here more so because, as you'd said, and correct me if I'm wrong, if you don't have professional status, there is, you're not in the union, and if somebody has to get cut, somebody that's not professional status, so it would, it would make it easier or worthwhile for somebody that maybe have that five years of teaching experience someplace, they'll say, hey, you know what, I want to go to Franklin, and I will go there, and I don't fear being let go within a year or so because they are investing back in the school. Is that correct?
Correct. They would all be in a union, but I just would say, seniority-wise, the non-PTS are in your first three years.
Thank you.
And then seniority status kicks in after the first three years. So, just to clarify, but you are correct in what you're saying around that.
Cool, thank you. And then, got a lot of questions, I'm going to keep it short though. We've been in this situation year-over-year. This is, there hasn't been a year that we've been saying, oh yeah, the budget is healthy, we don't have to reduce anything, and you know, we're going to add more. So, people may be tone-deaf to this, and they've said, well, we've come out the other end. And I guess, how do you answer that comment, that perspective to, yeah?
I would say, if you're one of the parents who's in a kindergarten class right now with 24 kids, you're feeling the direct impact. If you're a middle school parent and your kid's not having the same opportunities for after-school clubs as every student before them in Franklin in recent, in the recent era, you're feeling the impacts of that. We've been bailed out by ESR funding. I think this problem would have happened much, not much sooner, but COVID funding has also kind of perpetuated some of the one-time or limited funding that has not kind of like tipped the curtain open and exacerbated some of the problems. I think we've been hearing the warning, not just from me, from other school committee members, from other superintendents, from other, from the town administrators, that this has been coming and we've known this year to be a critical point, particularly when ESR 3 ran out. And we are not alone, there are many other districts engaging in the same types of conversations. And I will say, what I've told my fellow department heads is around schools, and I will credit the town administrator for sharing some information with all of the departments, but the manner in which it was shared felt cooperative and collaborative. And I will say, I had the opportunity to say, when I advocate for schools, I'm thinking of the students that I have in front of me. But the idea of this pie, my intention is not that we should be getting more slices of the pie so that we're taking from everyone else. But the issue is that the pie's not big enough, and we need a bigger pie so that we all can get, because it's an ecosystem. We have to work within a town that has to fund multiple departments. We're all living here and reaping the benefits of a very solid police force and a fire department and senior center and veterans and all the things out there. There's plenty of other departments, but I would just say, that has to fit within the ecosystem. But my job tonight is to advocate for schools and to say, this is what I believe we need to do, the job that we, so we can provide the opportunities for kids. So, that's where this number comes from.
Great, thank you. Definitely, once again, appreciate the thought, the effort, the energy. I don't even want to know how many, countless of hours have gone into this and how many more will go between now and when the budget is finally approved. But thank you for all of your hard work. Thank you for your staff, Dr. Dutch, your assistant as well. Appreciate that, so thank you.
Thank you.
So, you know, I think everyone has covered a lot of different topics and really appreciate all the time, the effort, and really the thought process here. I think the story is clear and really comes across well, and a lot of the different potential impacts, what we can do. I think that's an exciting, exciting discussion to finally be having, if we are able to actually pull this off and if we do get the buy-in that is going to be needed kind of across the board. I do want to make sure that, you know, that there is this kind of positive atmosphere. Yeah, I can definitely sense it up here. But I do want to make sure that people watching remember what happens if we don't succeed here. It's very easy to talk about these great opportunities, the great things that we can do, the fact that we can provide additional support to our students, the fact that we can bring more students to, you know, within the Franklin systems through ECD, or through our special education programs. That matters a lot. But if we fail, I think those costs really, really can't be conveyed in strong enough terms. So, I just want to make sure that people understand that there's a lot riding on this. This is going to be an active choice. We have the active choice up here as part of this equation. Our town council is going to have an active choice. You know, it's going to be very important that we're able to voice our opinions there and make sure that they know that we support this as a community. And the potential to have an override, you know, that is going to be yet again, an active choice by the community if they want this. Honestly, that's what it's going to come down to. I think the discussion around cooperation and how we're, you know, how we're working with the town, you know, that's really great to hear. And I think it's also very important that people out there understand, you know, the school is not asking for more of the town. The town as a whole needs more. The town as a whole needs more support, needs more funding, and has been challenged in these past few years. So, we're trying to work with them, not, not over them, not trying to take things from other groups. We're trying to work with them to make sure that this town has what it needs, and this just happens to be a very large part of it. So, I do applaud that kind of cooperative engagement. I really appreciate that, and I'm very happy to hear that the town has been, you know, kind of supportive of this and been helpful and cooperative. There's lots to kind of go on about. I do get to hear this tomorrow night, excited to do that. I did have a couple of kind of specific questions. So, for the ESR roles in the survive scenario, are those still present or do those go away?
Stabilized?
Very stabilized, yes. Oh, no, no, no. Like, I'm trying to get a sense of where that...
Yes, they were absorbed in the stabilized.
Okay, excellent.
For the most part, right? Totally, all of them were.
Excellent. And again, those are focused primarily on mental health for students and the support kind of across the board.
Right, yes.
Excellent, okay. And then I did also notice the two FTEs that we're looking to bring on potentially for Strive. How many students are we able to support with that?
That's to support another four students.
Four students, okay. So, I did just kind of a back-end app calculation based on some of the numbers we provided earlier, that's somewhere around, what, 200K if we're able to bring those four students in?
Correct.
In district?
Correct.
So, that, I want to make sure people listening are understanding, the kind of investment idea here is that if we are bringing on two FTEs, they can support four students who are now in a learning environment that is much more positive for them, as was brought up earlier, more positive for the students around them. But simple, you know, simple numbers, there is also a significant financial benefit to the town to bring them in. So, I think it's, it's important to note that.
To quantify it, the cost to bring on those two additional staff, we anticipate around $100,000 combined. So, the revenue that's created is, you know, the return on that investment is $100,000.
Yes. And that is exactly the kind of thing that we're trying to look at here. If we can take this moment to make an investment in something that, from a moral perspective, from a, just, from a value perspective for the students and for the education system, is kind of a no-brainer, you know, if you just want to know about money, it's a, you know, we get a fantastic return on our investment here. Hundred-K investment, save 200K, and that goes on in perpetuity. This is not just kind of a one-off... This is not just kind of a one-off. This is something that we can actually continuously go after and think about this in the long run. If we continue to take this approach and continue to invest, this doesn't have to be the only time we do this. So I, I want to make sure that people watching are understanding just how important some of these little line items are. And they're not just expenditures, they're really growth opportunities and investments in our students and our long-term viability here as part of the school system.
Could I just add to that?
Please do.
We've been approached by other districts to, Mrs. Marano and I have, have received calls from other superintendents saying, hey, listen, we have a student, we've heard a lot about your programming. We don't want to send them to this particular collaborative, but would you be willing? We have not been in a position because we've been trying to stabilize our own systems where we could do that. But there is potential, I know Dr. Dutch has had experience with this as well, is I'm not suggesting this as a business model, but there have been opportunities where we've been approached, hey, we would rather invest and pay you the tuition to have this kid be, instead of being traveled to a collaborative program. It might, maybe works just at what they've heard about our programming. We've had to deny that type of request. You know, in an alternate universe with a stable budget with the right number of staff and, and the potential for an opening that made complete sense, there's other opportunities there too. So I, I don't put that out there as a money-making strategy. That's someone who came to us, we said no because we just, we're not in the position to do that. But I just would say there's other opportunities out there that when we invest in ourselves and get ourselves on good footing, these are the types of returns that come back. And, you know, I know that Mrs. Sullivan mentioned daycare. There are districts that have daycare models out there where they do pay, they're not free. But they offer it as a recruitment retention tool for young staff members who are looking for those opportunities. The selling point is they don't get charged for summer and vacations. As many folks know out there with daycare, you get hit for those, those times, snow days, everything. But the idea is if you had a model and you had the facilities and the space to do it, these are ways to create additional revenue too, which you have to invest in that being part of your program, being what you offer. So I'm not pitching that as a sales, these are not sales pitches. These are just opportunities where we get stable and we have a moment to fund, to field the team and know what we're dealing with and have the right people that are highly qualified and well-trained. And we can dedicate that kind of time and not have a turnstile of onboarding to new folks or whatnot. I think we could get ourselves out of the weeds a bit and get into some of these more forward-thinking ideas that everyone, I remember last year during some of those budget hearings, I heard a lot about. The vision, I use the example, I felt, last year I felt like I couldn't pay the rent, but my landlord was asking me about investing in a pool in the backyard for a house I don't own. And I remember feeling like that. That's like a, a specific analogy around like, I can't think about that because I'm trying to figure out how to pay bills. So, you know, it doesn't mean we don't try and that we won't try to continue to move some of this forward, but I can tell you, many of them are connected to the system. The idea of having the right FTEs, the right amount of teachers and classes, have programming that you can show, pathways that you can show. So.
Yeah, that's really great. And I appreciate that kind of additional guidance and the color there. I, I think it's very important. And it also kind of continues down the same exact idea of investment now really pays off in the long term on many fronts. You did also just bring up the, I think, a very important point of retention. I, I think people don't fully understand just how expensive it is to hire someone. It's not the paying, like the paying them part, that, that is just part of that battle. But the effort in both time and money to be able to go out and try to replace twenty percent of our staff in a given year, it is pretty immense. Like there's, there's a lot of churn there, there's a lot of cost, where if we become the kind of place that people want to come to, that gets easier. If we don't have to replace twenty percent of our staff in a, in a given year, that money goes back into the system. As we go through that, yes, we're trying to get some of the best teachers we have. I think we have some really fantastic educators and staff here. But if we're going to be able to retain them, instead of having to try and train them up or become enterprise rent-a-car all over again, we have to actually be willing to make sure that they feel comfortable here. We do that, they stay, they start bettering the system. It, it is, is rewarding, it's a cycle. All we have to do is actually be able to get on it instead of trying to survive it or trying to get off without losing more. So if we can invest, there are many, many different steps along this path. It's not just two FTEs and Strive. It is not having to replace twenty percent of your staff. It's not having to spend all that time, all that effort and hoping for the best or filling in the gaps in the meantime. The cost associated with being able to fill in those gaps when we can't get the teachers in time or when we can't get the staff in time is pretty immense. Not just on the actual cost associated with getting people in from a temporary perspective, but the mental anguish that goes into having to do multiple jobs at once because there's no one else left to do it. And I think we've gotten to the point where we rely on so many of our staff and teachers being better than we are and taking on those extra roles simply because we're not willing to invest. And I think we really have to make a decision as to whether we're going to accept the fact that they're not going to continue to do that forever. And we get to, you know, basically we have to step up to the plate. So I, I think that's, you've done a good job of illustrating all that and making sure that those points are clear. So thank you.
At the end of the line, echoing a lot of sentiments that, that have been said already, but I think it's clear here, you know, with the picture that you've drawn for us, that a healthy budget for our students, for our district that has so much more opportunity to grow here. We need to give you that budget so that you can do the long-term planning that, you know, you've been mentioning time and again, that the ability to do that kind of planning ultimately saves the district money, saves us resources, allows us to innovate and try new things for the kids. And I think that what I keep coming back to is, is the atmosphere of uncertainty line there. And this feels like it could take us a step away from that, you know, a step, a step that we need big time. So, yeah, I don't have any more questions, but thanks so much for, for putting all this together and be here to listen to it again tomorrow.
Thank you all so much for your great comments and questions. No surprise, I had a few myself that I'm going to chat about as well. One of the things, Dr. Dutch, hold harmless, can you just kind of elaborate a bit more on that?
Sure. So there was a point in time where your enrollment was where it was. And chapter seventy-eight is based on partially enrollment, but also municipal revenue growth factor, which is property value, per capita income, a couple of other factors as well. So you were receiving a certain dollar amount of chapter seventy-eight at that point in time. Over time, as your enrollment goes down, you should have been getting less chapter seventy-eight. The state holds you harmless and doesn't reduce your chapter seventy-eight. And in reality, they continue to have your chapter seventy-eight grow up. It only grows right now at thirty dollars per pupil, so for us it's a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars next year. So, so that's an easy explanation of what hold harmless is. If they were going to give you the foundation dollars per pupil, you'd be getting twelve million dollars less than you are currently getting. So that's what they mean by hold harmless.
So, do you know, offhand, just kind of looking at the rest of the state, you know, how do we rank in terms of hold harmless? You know, the, the funding, the twelve point six million that we receive?
We're second. We're ranked second. Boston is the only other community that has a higher hold harmless rate than we do.
I think I remember kind of hearing about that. Please-
Yeah, I recall a graphic that was put together last year for, for that, that showed every, every single town and where, where they fell. And we were second to Boston at that. That's in the FY twenty-four budget, superintendent's recommended budget slide deck.
Thank you very much. I always think that's an important statistic to really kind of, to kind of talk about and to drive home. That, you know, we have, when you're just, when you're looking at this budget in the total dollars that it all represents, that, yeah, this is twelve million dollars that, you know, we're just getting as a handout from the state that, you know, theoretically.
Well, and as the foundation, as the district's foundation budget goes up, the hold harmless amount is going to continue to increase as well, as will the required local contribution. If you look at the required contribution on an annual basis, it continues to climb at a greater rate than the chapter seventy-eight does. Because their intent is to narrow that, the intent is to narrow the hold harmless amount. That's not been the reality though.
And with this hold harmless, it's being held harmless by, by law, correct? It's so that theoretically, you know, it's not something that kind of should be guaranteed, can be guaranteed.
It's the formula. The legislature can revisit that formula at any point in time. And I believe that there's been some conversation about revisiting that formula.
And I always think that's-
Because the, because the pot, you know, the pot of money for the state is also finite. And as that pot shrinks, there are others who are not getting all that they should be. And so the perception is that if that twelve million dollars from Franklin became part of everybody else's pot, they would be more at their target share. So yes, it's not guaranteed to, to be there for us forever.
And so I think that's always, when I'm looking at some of these numbers, when I'm looking at, you know, if, you know, there is just that two and a half percent increase from, you know, from this year to next, there's five and a half million dollars worth of cuts that, you know, with this hold harmless, I mean, that's twelve million dollars of this kind of guillotine, you know, hanging over our, our head. One other thing, if we could go back to, I believe it was page twelve, in district programming. And I know, and Paul, thanks so much for, you know, kind of your comments in terms of like that, like that's cost savings and that return on investment. Because this is also something, I feel like that kind of comes up quite a bit when they kind of talk about, you know, how much it, it costs to educate, you know, certain, some of our kiddos. One huge shout out to Marion Goodman. I remember last year, I just kind of off the top, asked her approximately, how much money are we saving per student? And, you know, in no time she was, probably about fifty mil, fifty K and it's, it's pretty, pretty in line right there. So when we look at, you know, three million dollars worth of savings by having some of these programs is absolutely fantastic. It's a testament to the great programming that's been developed. And when you look at, you know, how much more it would cost if we did not develop these, these programs. And, and that's just the, the quantitative aspect. You know, during the visioning, these KJeps talked about and really kind of commended us for some of these amazing programs that we have, not even looking at the financials, but just that, that qualitative aspect of that when, when we have students, when we have Franklin kids in Franklin schools, they get invited to birthday parties. That just wouldn't be happening if, you know, the, these kids were being transported out. We also really can't afford to have every single child be transported out. But, but there's such a qualitative benefit to having these programs and it's fantastic. Oh, by the way, it, it's also saving us three million dollars.
So I think last year we really tried to hit on the qualitative, but brought in the quantitative this year to try to balance the conversation with some numbers when listening to stories that exist. I will say, this is four programs. There are more programs, this could be extrapolated out among other programs that we have within the district that serve a similar function and that may be a worthwhile exercise, but just, this is, these are the most, these are the ones that Mrs. Marano and her team selected for the obvious reasons. Certainly, this could be built out over each program really to show. But I appreciate the work that you do.
It's, it's wonderful and it's incredibly important to kind of have this information while we're having these discussions. So thank you very much. And just one other comment. I know, you know, for those kind of listening or even on the board in the past years, last year, you know, there was a lengthy discussion when it came to the superintendent's budget. Particularly there was, it was page ten. It was a number of items that were being requested, but weren't able to be incorporated within the budget. And really want to begin to express my gratitude for the way that this budget was presented. It's, it's not a wish list of, of every single item. There are plenty of items that would be wonderful to, to be reincorporated within the budget. But it does kind of strike that realistic tone of having that balance of, you know, exactly what is being asked? What do we need just to be able to kind of survive? But being balanced with the realities that we have in front of us. And I know it's, it maybe seems, you know, at, at odds when you look at, you know, a thirteen percent increase in the overall budget when on average we got two point seven. But that's, that's exactly what it is. It's, it's, you know, if we were to have that complete wish list, astronomical numbers. And, but I think it's incredibly important just to kind of start with some number that survived and stabilized. And then kind of start to incorporate that, that thrive. And to say, where could we go? But there is, there's so much more room for growth. This is not the ceiling.
This is not the ceiling, just to be clear. This is a recommendation that was thoughtfully put together in context to wanting to advocate to get us on better footing. But certainly not, this does not, I'm, I'm thinking of all the people before me who've talked about the twenty years of erosion, right? You're on this island and the water keeps creeping up. And then you forget that you had a dock because it's underwater, right? But then there are other things you never forget, you know, the boat you have at the bottom of the, of the water, right? You start to think about those pieces. So, you know, it felt like in order to try to prepare for budgets, you know, or three technically with one, one that's pretty much, we'd have to know our, our final number before we talk reductions. We're also trying to balance the ship and lead with some confidence and, hey, we can do this and we can put out the facts and here is where we are today. But I also don't want to see any more mid-year resignations or things like that because I think it just feeds that culture of instability. We've seen more and more of that in more recent years where we have found ourselves hiring mid-year. And I certainly would want to convey a level of confidence that we will get through this as a staff, but this is ultimately what we need to do it. I don't want to be in a situation where, where having to make reductions like we have done last year and, and previous years. We try to be fiscally responsible and also advocate at the same time. But this is not a number that, thank you for saying that, because it's not a ceiling. It's a matter of here's what we need to bring this back into the budget. It doesn't mean we wouldn't revisit some other programming. I sent this out to the entire district. Some of this information from the budget update, we provided a link to a survey for feedback, received some really good input from staff and thoughts and comments. And we have folks that are worried about projecting out, if it comes to a place where we have to make cuts, you know, you try to preserve class size as much as you can, but we think about all the people that interact. You heard our math interventions, for example, speak during that school committee meeting last year about the types of interventions and data they collect and the work that they're doing to try to move things forward. You start to think about our counselors and the counseling staff that we've worked so hard year after year to advocate to build up that came from a recommendation from the counseling review. That's occurred, we had, we had recommendations. We've incorporated them into ESER because that was part of a public discussion when we surveyed the community. They wanted counseling support. To get to this place of having to get back into a compliance mindset strips out all those pieces. And then it's more money to try to bring those things back because of how we're organized. So I think we want to maintain the investments that we've kind of clawed tooth and nail. And some of these came at decisions that either I've made or people before me have made around, I have to choose one and I'm going to go with this. It's like, how do we honor that? And I think there's, there's a litany of things that you lose over time. Some I would not recommend bringing back. And I'd have to look at that list from twenty years. But there certainly are some pieces, just to, just to acknowledge loss and things that we, we don't have to carry forward. I think they're not off the table, but with a stabilized budget, when we can start to think creatively and look at things, it doesn't mean we still can't restore some of those pieces. And they might not come in the form of a monetary request because we can get creative with who we have. But we can't do that when we have people doing kind of multiple roles because we have a vacancy. So now you have to pick up an extra set of, an extra class, right? We have, we've experienced that. You may recall kind of what we had to go through with our physics class last year, those types of things. These are the volatile things that take up a lot of bandwidth and ultimately impact kids in a way that I, I don't think is, is the right. These are the volatile things that take up a lot of bandwidth and ultimately impact kids in a way that I, I don't think is, is the right thing. So, thank you for saying that. But this is a big number, but it's a number that we feel like we can, we can begin to try to stabilize ourselves and get a better footing.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And again, I want to say too, I truly appreciate all the members of the community in the chamber and online at home that are paying attention to, to this information now. I do want to, I know we will have the budget hearings coming up, where there will be, you know, a lot of opportunities for kind of communication. But I do want to open up the floor if there are any members of the community that do wish to make a comment about, about the budget. Could just name, address, and try to keep it to three minutes.
Denise Spencer, fifty-nine Milliken Ave. I just wanted to thank you, Superintendent Jaeger, central office admin, the building admin who do a lot of work behind the scenes, and all of you for all of the work that you've done putting this together. The hard work doesn't go unnoticed. I've always disagreed with your recommended budget. I know that's what it's called, but I know you, we've worked together. This is not what you would recommend. I know, it's two completely different things. I wish we could call it something else. You're just utilizing what you're given and doing the best with what you've got. The notion that schools already have what they need and just need to be more efficient is baloney. And I'm kind of sick of that narrative out in the public. We're not going to cut our way out of this crisis. No amount of efficiency can cure the problems that this district faces. And it's not just us. I know that many of you probably received the listserv emails from MASC. You know, a lot of the districts across the state are facing the same kind of problems. Committee member Griffith, I appreciate your comment. I think you said, spend a hundred grand, save two hundred grand. It's this kind of message that we need. It's simple for folks who don't follow, live and breathe education funding like all of you do. Speaking of funding and keeping it simple, I also thought of this, so thank you, committee member Griffith, for this. The override needed for your Level Service Plus, I think it was called, is a small amount of money to restore many more millions of dollars that were lost and potential that has been lost over twenty years of cuts. So I think that that's quite a bargain. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much. And again, just for the community at large, sharing the budget hearings. There'll also be plenty of opportunities to communicate as the budget is continuing to be discussed.
Just a final note, Ms. Scott, we will be posting that budget book by as early as next week, probably by Monday, to give people at least a week's notice to look through the full budget book prior to the hearing, so they can have the presentation plus the budget book to review. It'll be accessible to, to all to, to review. Did I miss anything on that, Bob? Nope. So it'll help our community familiarize themselves with some of the concepts that we shared, look at the data that backs some of the concepts in the slides. And then obviously, we'll be here for the hearing to hear any questions or comments or anything else. So just wanted to let you know that the budget book will be available.
Thank you very much.
One thing, for the content that was shared tonight, that should be available to normal cadence, correct?
Correct. This is the budget presentation, and this is a public document at this point. We're working hard to just clean up a few pieces of the book. The book is like fifty, how many pages is it?
Fifty-seven, Dave.
Fifty-seven, so we just want to verify a couple of things to make sure that it's completely consistent with what we need, but that should be available as well. So I'd like to have them both out around the same time, because this without the book leaves you just seeing, you know, we recognize that, so we'll get that done.
And again, thanks for all the work that went into this, just seeing what went in over the weekend. I am very glad that we pay you on a salary basis and not hourly. Thank you. All right. Now we'll head on over to discussion action items.
Okay, we have a policy for first read. And I'm just going to get situated for a minute. All right, so policy for first read. I recommend moving policy C.A., administrative goals, to a second read as detailed.
All right. Is there a motion?
Some vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we'll have discussion in just a moment, but just kind of quick little, like almost housekeeping, when it comes to the budget, to the policy. This is typically kind of what will happen, is that policy will come out of the subcommittee when changes are being made. And for us to kind of vote on, we have the first reading, to kind of take a look at it right now. Oftentimes, if there's any suggestions, amendments to be made, we kind of go toss it out. Sometimes superintendent and his staff can just kind of clean it up, tidy it up. Other times, it'll go back to the joint, to the policy subcommittee, and then it'll go to a second reading. And at the second reading, kind of once it's been approved, then it'll actually officially hit the books. But that said, are there any discussions or questions about this policy?
Yeah, just two things, and one's nitpicking, one's a question. So reviewed, we have re hyphen viewed. Oh, thank you. All right, same page. All right, awesome. And then the next one was really around, can we elaborate? What do we mean by chief administrative officer? Same sentence. So same sentence with, with reviewed, yep, reviewed by the chief administrative officer concerned.
That was left in there as a part of the policy to try to, it, it could be the assistant superintendent of teaching and learning, depending on what the, what the actual goal was. We could, if you, if you prefer to strike that, put a different term. You'll notice that we put, it said channels will be established, so the idea was to try to name it that the superintendent will establish channels, right? That recommends the group. So ultimately, we left the language as it existed with the MASC, but certainly can, can change that. I think it's unsubstantive, so.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Other than that, I am good.
Typically be anyone below the superintendent that's in the chain of command for goals, so looking at that. It could say administrator more broadly, but we left it so that it's, shows a bit of a progress, a progression, before it gets to school committee, superintendent, and then a chief administrative officer, so. Might be, I can't think of another term maybe we could use, but that's just the context to give you a sense.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, seeing no other questions or comments, vote will come on a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion only items, none. Information matters. Superintendent evaluation?
No updates at this time.
All right, how about budget?
Well. Well, we haven't met since the last meeting, but hopefully everyone was paying attention to the past couple hours. And as was alluded to, we will be having a joint budgets and committee meeting tomorrow night here in the chambers at seven P.M. So please do, one and all who are still online here in the chambers, either come or tune in to that. And we'll be having our next scheduled budget subcommittee meeting on the nineteenth. And that evening, we'll also have, as was alluded to, the, the, the budget presentation or the-
Hearing.
Hearing, budget hearing.
Thank you. Policy?
No updates at this time.
Community relations?
Yep. So for community relations, we actually met yesterday. It was a one-off meeting, talking through the, actually reviewing the newsletter draft. So that actually will be coming out Thursday, March seventh is the target. So just to reiterate, the intent of the newsletter is to catch folks up on the ongongs of the school committee. We know that we here live and breathe school committee, but not everybody else does. So it's just a way to really distill that information into digestible content, pull out some highlights, give kudos to things that are happening in the school district, share some resources and kind of give a preview of what's to come, so folks can quickly, easily just like look at this and be like, okay, kind of caught up, and oh, that's to be something great to attend and be, be mindful of, get that, things like that on their calendar. So it'll be our first edition. It's just someplace to start, but the goal is to get this out monthly. And it should be distributed to the whole entire district, and we'll try to get this outside of the district as well, just to get more people aware of what's going on and just give them a, really something quick and easy to, to catch up on. You all, I had asked you all for bios, so that's also going to be in there, so I need that by end of day tomorrow. So if it's not there, sorry. So it's going out Thursday. And that's it. We do have our next meeting on Monday, which is our normal cadence, and we'll talk through potential for legislative forum and planning for the April edition of the newsletter, so. Good stuff.
Awesome. All right, I'm very excited to see this newsletter.
Oh, actually, sorry.
Please go on.
You all will get a sneak peek of it as well, so it won't be a surprise on Thursday. I will send you a view-only copy of the newsletter, probably tomorrow after the, but tomorrow's Wednesday, right? So I'll do it tomorrow morning, because at least you guys have that, so you can like see and not be surprised.
Awesome. All right, so all the more reason to make sure those, those bios are submitted.
Yes.
All right, Swak?
Yeah, Swak. We met this morning. We had a great meeting with several folks. We shared the student wellness program, discussed about the physical nutrition ideas and the nutrition ideas. And because there were the farmers market coming up in the next two months, and then the next meeting would be in the works.
All right, thank you. Let's see, how about mental health and wellbeing?
We, unfortunately, it was a snow day, so our next meeting is the twelfth.
Let's see, joint PCC?
Yep. We haven't met since our last meeting. Our next meeting is actually on April eighth.
DEI?
Our next meeting's Thursday. Unfortunately, our meeting from last week got canceled, so, but we will be meeting Thursday.
All right. And then comprehensive facility. I know Superintendent Jaeger really kind of talked about a lot of the work that's being done. But yeah, we had one of a two-day workshop that's really kind of talking about the visioning. And we're really going to make sure to have that, Kate Chesip's really going to put that strong facilities kind of angle on it for, for the next one. And I believe on the March thirteenth, so a week from tomorrow, she'll also kind of be back to present to the subcommittee as a whole. All right. And moving on to consent agenda.
I recommend approval of the minutes from the February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting as detailed. I recommend acceptance of two checks totaling one thousand four hundred seventy-one dollars and fifty cents from the JFK PCC as detailed, as follows, one hundred and twenty-five for field trips and one thousand three hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty cents for supplemental supplies. And, excuse me, I recommend acceptance of two checks totaling one thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars for the Parmenter PCC for field trips as detailed. I recommend acceptance of a check for five thousand dollars from Thomas A. Wagner for a F, for an FHS scholarship as detailed. I recommend acceptance of a check for ninety-three dollars and one cent from Ohio Pile Prints Incorporated for supplemental supplies as detailed.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as detailed?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as detailed.
Second.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none, vote will come on a motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Up next, we got good of the order. Again, first meeting of, of the month. We'll always have an opportunity for the school committee members to kind of talk about going ons and ways in which they can kind of maybe find any improvements. So if there are any, we'll kind of go down the row here.
Yep. So just, I guess this is for the public. Knowing that where we're at budget-wise, I think we all have to be involved and all in. I feel like this is something that, it doesn't affect just those that are in the schools or those that are using certain programs or not. This is everybody. It's affecting the whole entire town. So I think folks need to be mindful of this and should be encouraged to pull in anybody and everybody that lives in Franklin, regardless of your pers, your perspective, so that everybody has a voice to kind of say, where, where do they envision Franklin being and going? And it's, it's, it's something that we need to just hear from, from the masses, and we need to collectively look at it and look at different perspectives and see, you know, what you may have missed, maybe in your blind spot, because for us, we're all close to this, you know? And it's easy for us to say, okay, this is the right path, whereas others come from different industries, have different skill sets, have different backgrounds, and they may be able to give a different nugget that we may not be thinking of. And I think it's just someplace we need to be more inclusive and, okay, with people disagreeing with us. You know, it, it's, it's part of the process, and at the end of the day, it's the will of the people in terms of how we do. And if folks say no to an override, then we have to understand that as a community, we've chosen to say no to our students or no to the process, or if, if people are saying no, we have to understand why they're saying no, so that we can overcome those obstacles and hurdles versus just moving forward with our own path and own, own self. So just, just something for the public to be mindful of. And as we have these conversations, have these meetings, tell your, your peers or tell you other parents that you may not even talk to, just like, hey, did you know about the budget meetings? And hey, go there and attend, so that they can be more informed on what's going on. That's it.
I just, thanks, Al, because I've kind of like wanted just to reiterate the same thing. I know that I'm going to get calls about this sort of three or four budget model, and people are going to say, why are we doing the biggest one? Parents, that's my silo, so. I, I, you know, next meeting, when we have a more thorough presentation, the nineteenth, we are hoping that you'll show up and do just that. Like, you know, tell us what you want as a community, so that we can advocate for what we want and not be gun shy, going to the town like, oh, can we get this? Like, we want to be speaking from the voice of many. We could, we could do this if we do it together. So it's just something I wanted to reiterate, and I, I think it's worth mentioning, because I anticipate this will be a, another comment that I'm going to get. We're doing a very comprehensive facilities vision assessment. What's going on in the buildings? What are we envisioning for the future of education? How can we create buildings that serve the children in the way that they need to learn? We've done visioning as far as like, you know, what's best for these children, like these, these project-based learning and things we've learned about in these visioning workshops where, you know, like I know Newton North just, we, we heard a story, they created like a biofuel through doing like some project work, and now they're fueling their transportation with it. And these, these are just things that we could be, we could be doing things like this with the proper space needs. So, you know, we didn't pull the trigger on the redistricting last year because it was short-sighted, and we needed to be able to build a vision that was sustainable and would serve the community for the long term. So people say, okay, you want an override, are we, are we going to get enough so that it's sustainable, we don't have to come back in three years and ask again? And that's why we're doing it the way we're doing it. So that's why we're not just trying to shut down schools. You know, aside from the fact that that faculty moves with the school, and you don't really get to save as much as you think you do and, and things like that. So, you know, it's, it's just something that I hear from people who don't have kids in the schools often, it's like, you know, why don't we do that? So, you know, we're assessing, we're doing these visionings, we're doing the work, so just kind of a, you know, PSA for the community.
So the, and when we're talking about the budget, it was, I want to say to the community, like, if you compare with the neighbor in neighboring towns' price, home prices, our, our, our property has been increased like twenty percent more than the neighboring price. Why it has been depreciated so much, all because of the school district. The, the school dis, our school district curriculum is better than what the other neighbor, neighboring towns offers. So we definitely need this, get going. So we definitely need this, get going with this budget. So community should understand that and, uh, there is, I can't imagine if it goes less than what we proposed today. That's what I recommend for, thank you.
And, uh, one thing too, I just want to, uh, mention before we move on to citizens' comments, um, field trips. I know, uh, a lot of times when we kind of, this is, uh, we talk about, uh, field trips and when we kind of get that opportunity to, you know, say yes or no. You know, last meeting we had Costa Rica and Italy. One of the things often kind of comes up, um, is that, that price point and just kind of how prohibitive that might be for, for certain families. Um, one of the things afterwards, uh, Superintendent and I were, uh, speaking about was as we kind of continue to look to expand, uh, those field trips, to also look at not just, you know, destination and then kind of build around there. But, uh, to kind of look to and, and speak with E F and say, all right, what if we kind of focus on a price point that might be more affordable to students? What are some of the options there? And what are some of the destinations that might be able to fit kind of that paradigm instead? And so, um, I know Superintendent, I want to thank you very much. I know you very quickly kind of started to, to work on that. Uh, and, uh, so we might start to kind of see that moving forward as well. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out there because I know that's this committee and also the past committee. So one of those, uh, that price point was an issue that kept kind of coming up. And so maybe there might be something, uh, that can kind of be done about that. Um, but that said, uh, now we'll move on to citizens' comments. Are there any citizens in the audience in person or online who would like to make a comment on an item not tonight's agenda and falls within the committee's purview? All right. Uh, seeing none, uh, we'll move on to new business.
Okay. New business, as you know, next meeting is the hearing for our budget. That's the primary piece. Uh, it will have other procedural parts of the agenda, but nothing like presentations or anything like that. We want to kind of dedicate and focus the time we need to do that work.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you very much. Um, now I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Uh, discussion questions, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all very much. I appreciate all your time.
So the question, do we have to adjourn? It's been a long.